Welcome everyone to the council chambers and everyone watching remotely to this regular meeting of the Delaware City Council. Both all please.
Preston.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here. Please join in the pleasure. Thanks to our invocation given by Reverend Helen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll let you go through the list of mayors and the council's in place. May this even be a sort of a good idea that produces good results for your presence with us.
Next item is public comment, general public comment, must give a matter subject to the Bureau of Springfield and the City Council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on that is not appearing on the agenda, they can do so now. There will be a time limit, a time limit of no more than three minutes for any speaker. Mayor Castle. As you know, the residents of Delaware Hills would imagine capable of running late. You're clearly satisfied with the performance of Calhoun and very much on control of all others, like removed from private or private ownership. Member Blackco elected, this by Stennis Valley, grown up in high school, implementing motion J. But during the Democratic decision, these Calhoun supporters who are not even Calhoun's history are authority will of the municipal voters. At the mayor's meeting, he moved to sit in Stennis. The municipal mayor tried to install a new Blackco member who would support Rachel J. However, that ever failed to deliver its burden with the Stennis Valley members to keep the Stennis Mayor credit and barred it for Calhoun's. This was a critical vote as Craig is now the only one voting back for approval for the counter buyout. At the March 3rd, mayor's meeting, county nominees of the cultural commission were being voted on. It was argued that nominees for the cultural commission should actually live because it was put out that Mayor Craig had supervised the local who lived in Stennis Valley had supported Calhoun's D S L and opposed the interest of coastal communities. Most of the municipal mayors supported Rachel J and approved the trip on the Monterey, almost the city town mayors opposed both. Motion to send the slated nominees, considering entirely the municipal mayor and Mayor supervisor Lopez, was made and supported by every municipal mayor in Delaware Hills. Very time recently, the Delaware Hills and line was in the founding of those peninsula. We third note were our representatives, Samuel Calhoun, D S L, and Yuckum Buyout Calhoun. I'll be the first thing, I'll accept two votes as it's due with minimums and all of a mobile consideration. The two votes in short order which appear being contradicted to the stated desire of the Delaware Hills residents next for their clarification. In the interest of open dialogue and transparency, I would encourage the mayor and any council members who sell more than affect Delaware Hills policies to be proactive and engage in residence to plan their decision. The previous mayor used a monthly email invite. Next door votes with links thanks for that. Next door votes with links to the mayor or council members who wanted to support this vice. Just as some established mechanism, we just some established mechanism for communicating with residents. But we are not left wondering why those are heard. And it's just as brand ass in 1913 sunshine is the bestest effect of city attorney all of the state. Yes, this is vital and it's true then and it's still true today. Thank you. Thank you. Any other city or any other public comments? If seeing none, public comment is now closed. Our next item is something that I always enjoy doing. We tried to do it last week, but Officer Gomez's family was not here. But we're delighted to have them with us today. And I know Chief Burkle is excited as everyone else to do this, so I'll hand it over to you, Chief Burkle.
In this circumstance, I'll face the audience a little bit, I don't want to turn my back to you, but I want to thank you all for being here. One has been. I'm allowed to talk? One has been with us for a little about three months now. He's a welcome addition to our family. This is actually his second swearing in. We had to swear him in when he first started in a quiet ceremony, but we wanted to do this in public. He's a homegrown boy. He grew up most of his life in seaside, is that right? And we're just thrilled to have him here. He fits in really well. We're super happy to have him with our department. That being said, we're going to swear him in again and it's his badge, put that on him. Put my glasses on so I can see. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I want to go with you solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support and defend, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. Against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, I do an obligation freely, without any mental reservation or preference of invasion, without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion, and that I will well, and I will well and faithfully discharge, faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties which I'm about to enter. You know, you have Mr. Gomez. I'm asking you, you've got a job and you can't, you've got a friend that's dead of your son.
Well, no, it's bad.
All right, our next item is the consent agenda, or there are any items that council members can want to call. If it seems none, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone in the public would like to call? It seems none, I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Same.
Motion, say in all in favor?
I.
Any vote? Motion to pass unanimously? There are no old business, so move on to new business. The first item is authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Denise Duckey and Associates to develop a six cycle housing element and associated school of year in mountain level and city management.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a surprise to anybody. We've been talking for quite a while. Everybody's aware of our rated numbers and we need to get our housing element up to date between the cycle and the ultimate. We've got eight years ago. So we're quick, we can that one finish and then hit this one down. I'm sure it's very important that we do that. Obviously Denise is our. Is it okay if I say her though? Denise, Denise has been doing the city for a long time and she knows, she knows the city as well. And we'll be better equipped than anybody out there to help us get through this process as quickly as possible. This is going to be a very tight timeline, as you'll see from the scope of work presented in this contract. It's going to be a full time job for Denise Schrecker. We're going to be seeing a lot of Denise over the next eight, ten months. So, so get ready. If you have any questions about the details in the context of the work budget, Denise and I are available for questions. I know with these kinds of things, there is a chance for sticker shock. The good thing about this is that we have done the thing, what our sister agencies are doing and the sticker shock that they're going through. I think Denise has done a great job of trying to combine the work that she's been doing on the fifth element and build up of that as much as possible to help bring the cost down. So, you know, I don't want to get into the details of what other cities are considering and what their contract might be with their contractors, but Denise has done a good job at giving us what I think is a fair budget and really working to lower the cost for our community. So, but if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you, city manager. I'll start with council member Halleck with any question, comments that you might have.
Second, Mr. Mayor, I'm just using this.
Councilmember Dooley.
No question for me, he's over here, thank you.
Councilmember Beth.
My only concern that I have is that we're still messing around with the fifth. The fifth report, whatever you want to call it, section, and we're supposed to be going to the eighth, so I am hoping we can this thing spread out and get it done in a, in a, probably in a month. Seems like we're waiting on the A ball as well.
Councilmember Shirley.
I have a few questions. Denise, mostly they're going to be for you, so. In terms of your timeline, it looks like we need to get a lot of tasks done by the end of May, so the draft can be put into a public review in June. And then sent to H C D at the beginning of July, that's how I understand it. I'm wondering, does that give us another, another, enough time for a second review from H C D?
I think it does. And also just, I, this Denise stuff is planned for the city and it would also come out some time. So if there's a thousand people working correctly with H C D, so they think that having us in the fifth cycle will give them an opportunity to look.
So, so you're anticipating your comments on the first review of the sixth cycle?
I'm anticipating whatever H C D puts forth, as you know, and I think is evident from every time jurisdictions have been announced. The H C D comments are extensive. And they require a lot of input from the cities. But they are also very specific. So I think having seen the review about twenty different versions makes to be for this fifth cycle, we try to anticipate some of that and proactively put in progress of the city platform or have to understand immediately and support so that H C will be happy with every single one. But I can't guarantee that.
Okay, so if it does go in for a second review, does it need a second thirty day public comment?
No, it's seven days.
Only seven?
Seven days after then.
Okay, yes, okay, that's good. I was curious, so it's from all paper, it sounds like we'll do a fifth cycle E I R and then maybe a sixth cycle E I R?
Yeah, I remember the question two weeks ago, and I think you asked the same one. Yeah, the determination of what type of environmental document for sixth cycle has announced will occur after we understand whether rezoning and the programs are from the fifth cycle happening. Anticipation is, as I mentioned before, and fifth cycle discussion, we're going to be addressing cumulative analysis for both fifth and sixth Rena. So the numbers will be fifth cycle plus the cumulative new one eighty-four, which is Rena, so a total of two seventy within the first term during the I R. And that will really instant the next environmental document, whatever that options would be, you can put in a placeholder here. But it could be tandem supplemental.
Okay. Okay, that's great, that's good to know. Um, let's see. I was curious how many meetings, I know there's couple public outreach meetings. How many meetings is it going to require for the council and for the planning commission? You have that played out.
One of our first tasks is working with city manager and to develop the meeting schedule. But we anticipate that we're going to have two, two meetings workshops before close to H C D. And they're actually not requirement for the document to be sent, you know, from city council directly today, it's to be at this point, they consider about having a secondary meeting, there will be meetings. But there'll be a thirty day review period after the draft, before the draft is sent to H C D, so we're in that thirty day review period for the sixth cycle and like to have meetings. Depending on whether or not there'll be joint meetings that we have on the sixteenth. On the workshop format and then adjourned to council position plans.
And I would still, we could get a timeline that incorporates both the seventh and sixth cycle. I would love to see those done here.
Yes, from that, that is happening when we do the meeting program as well as having the contract to do.
Yeah, okay, perfect. And then Denise, I just wanted to see if you can just talk to about the budget next year and where this money will be coming from or. Want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, most likely there are no grass or where they're funding something.
Okay, right. Great, sounds good. One more thing Denise, I'm really sorry. There was some optional tasks in the contract or in your outline. I was just wondering those will be approved separately, I'm assuming, as, as we go through the process?
Sure.
Yeah, we will be able to approve those separately. Some of them are, what are the housing moves?
Right, there's a few options that will be subject to an amendment and authorization prior to.
We included those, as you're aware of, because some of them may actually help speed up this process, like the pro housing designation. That or just to stay clear on exactly what that means, and what it puts us on the hook for. So before we jump into that, we wanted to do a little more due diligence.
Got it, okay, I'm good, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know there is a tight timeline with this. What I do like is task one, which really starts tomorrow with the city manager refining the scope of service for this. So even though it's tight, we're moving out immediately. And I'd like to see that. The other thing is the public outreach piece, the open houses and workshops, I think would be very beneficial as well as the the planning commission and council study sessions. And within a timeline, you can see that those are scheduled to happen in April, May time, right? So also just looking at getting that going as soon as possible. So I'd like to see that. I also have a question about the optional pass, but it's been answered. And the only other thing is, city manager, if maybe you could talk about the cost estimate that's in there and kind of how that's comparable to other jurisdictions, in terms of, of, of cost for this particular document.
Yeah, these things are very labor intensive and go through a lot of different meetings with the community and everything, and that's all time intensive and costs money. But without getting into the details of what other cities are doing, specifically Sand City, correct me if I'm wrong Denise, but I think they a few months ago, they, they did a contract in the neighborhood of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, almost a hundred thousand more than this. I've seen contracts. Because we're all doing this, we're all doing this at the same time. Unique in our world, in government like this, and, and so you can see what everyone else is doing. And I've seen estimates anywhere from a hundred to five hundred thousand dollars depending on the side of the community and, and what you're doing, so.
Thank you. And I also like the idea of taking the money through the, the savings that we have right now, mainly the ARPA funds. I think that's appropriate and we look at the math. Okay, with that, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any public comments regarding this item? Right, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council and set up a motion to authorize the city manager to enter in and into an agreement with Denise Duckey and Associates.
Move to approve.
Go ahead, say it. Then we have a second, all in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. I'll move on to the next item, which is a housing element update by Denise Duckey and Associates. With that, I'll turn it over to city manager.
Hey, so as we mentioned, we're on a very tight timeline. All other cities are also, no, no other city in moderate governing has housing element adopted yet either. So we're all kind of racing against the clock. And so now since we've got an approved contract, it's not going to hurt to pitch out.
Thank you, I just wanted to have a line of sound word. So before you tonight. You basically have an update, as you may recall on March sixteenth. We came before you, earned an update on the sixth cycle and also talked about the sixth cycle. There are a number of questions about the sixth cycle. So we wanted to put back again tonight and three things, one, number one, on March sixteenth, we talked about what is the best area for housing for community needs, we identified areas for Rena can be located, regional housing needs assessment or horrible ones can be located. So we identified those sites, site one and one A. And so this, tonight I'm coming back with a specific program that you saw last time, which is that revision, which has sites one and one A. And actually there's a type of, we have one location on that report, which you have on page fifty-five. On one, two, three, four. And the line said Rena on site one and should say in one A. You know, we, we said, we designated a lot of houses. So in fact, there's no real action and moving forward that direction. And I wanted to share questions on, if there's any changes to that, but moving along. And then the second item that you have, that I really wanted to point out was different background information, that's the cycle and the first step. Information that's needed for site inventory and needed for a permanently fair program, fair outing. So with, as the previous item, we talked about, yes, we're going to be coming before you for discussion of programs, revisions of programs, et cetera. So the attachment to this, I'm starting on page sixty. Sixty-one, and back to your lap, if you're back housing elements, it's the housing element adopted in twenty nineteen as well as with the my, et cetera, recurring now. And wanted to share that with you now, so that when we come before you again, you're going to be looking at, are these valid, are they still? Are they still applicable to the city? Where do we want to change or where do you want to expand? And I'll be coming for you to talk about what's needed in additional. What is H C D accepting now for, for sixth cycle housing elements? So it's really important, I'm going to request that the city council really review these policies, look at them in my, what do we like, what do we don't like and what should be retained and what should be, what is maybe not. And when we come before you again, we'll also share, but you know, what we can, can do in terms of typing sometimes and that stat. So that's really important. We, we also updated the housing programs because we've got the emergency shelter requirements that's been adopted and further reading and what the second reading will happen on night.
I guess how it's supporting us.
Oh, thank you. So that's great, because that's an element that was one of our items that H C wants for the cycle, completion of the cycle. And I wanted to get with you also, there's a handout that I have at Spineup, Department of Running Fair Housing. There's two items, one of them is basically was talking about what is the F F H, it's a, that's a new requirement, it's A B forty-six or, but anyway, there's a requirement for the housing element, they tell them what to look at, additional policies and furthering our policies for to further their, and then F H have identified in the draft report. And the handout, people, thank you, Connor Poole, Associate, I think he's been handing those out, thank you. And, and basically what this does is identifies the, what H C D has shown on their website as this may be considered to be possibly discriminatory if we're doing this this way. So really to look out for, again, we're not asking for any action or discovery moments tonight, but it's really to look through those and just see, okay, the shoes set one's about what programs should have and the second is about what kind of loans and finances. And how do we, and how can we continue to be the community that you are, which is scrupulous and open and wanting to really work for making sure there isn't any unfair housing practices from the city. And that's what F F H is about and we want that H C D and I think we all want to have, have to be strong on that. So that is the information on, and I think you'll see there, one of the things that was on the agenda first way is the definition of family that we can see as to be discriminatory. And that's something that the housing element was identified and in the city that has been corrected, that's, that's great. Then you'll see other situations where you don't allow residential one calling themselves. I think the city has already some good practices and we'll talk more about those in the next meeting in the H. And with that, I really just have any, we're going to point you questions, but as I said, I'll work for the city council and anyone who's interested. Thank you.
Well, thank you Denise. I'll start with council member Halleck with any questions or comments. Thank you, this is better, the questions are.
No question for Denise, thank you Denise for the reservation.
And so Denise just keep there, the fifth cycle, we've done really what we need to do initially and then we can send that update to you, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, and then what, what's the next benchmark for us for this cycle? We have been waiting so we get comments back?
A sixty day review period for H C D and that went on twice, just directly on the last week. And we're doing a very big job of just identifying exactly what's changed in the housing element so that they could have that. And we've also, I'll be working on the overlaying the building ordinance revision, which is how we're suggesting would be approached to be done, maybe the level for residential and for, for ordinance, like one and one A. H C D is reviewing that as a path, have to take a look at it here. And then maybe just, we just come back and you can have concurrent adoption of the housing element and the rezonies, all we can do in two steps. And drafted in the preparation for the E I R, so that will go out next week. And then we've done the S B eighteen, which is the travel consultation requirement from three weeks ago. So that's going to be completed in the first mission drafting sections.
Great, that's good, good, good here. And are there going to be any changes to the programs before we see it again? Or are you, you just gave this, and, and are these same programs that are used for the fifth cycle?
For the, I think you're asking about the fifth cycle changes to program before you see it again.
Oh yeah, yeah, like this, this agenda item, you have all the, the goals and policies and the programs, so they're all for fifth cycle?
So, yeah, this, two parts to that question. So, yeah, this, um, two parts to that question. For fifth cycle, we don't anticipate bringing back these revised programs to, again, the next time we see them. Um, after HCD provides their comment on that for fifth cycle.
Right.
A fifth cycle, yes. You'll see all of these again and then more because that's really the part of what we're looking at, all these different programs. You know, the requirements for sixth cycle and making revisions or whatever. And so that's why you have this. You know, this is basically your roadmap now, the general plan, um, to programs that you have for your revenue. Um, and so you'll be, we'll be coming back to like this, a little, um, analysis of what staff feels would be, uh, appropriate for revision and additional projects that we would like to consider.
Oh, great.
That's for the sixth cycle, that's happening. We started on that, right?
Okay, good, very good. Yeah, I noticed some edits in there and I didn't know if I was saying it anymore. Um, just one thing I'll say, just so you know, I mean, there's some that will say, um, that it will be completed at the end of twenty twenty-three, which I felt a little uncomfortable with that since it's due December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, so I thought, oh, we could just like put, you know, like by the end of November, just be a little more specific about end of.
Um, I think that's fine. Um, at this point, it doesn't really matter from HCD perspective.
Okay.
Um, so I think we can put, you know, by December fifteenth, okay, and in some cases, you'll see third quarter of the rezoning.
Yeah, I, I.
A third quarter. Yeah, I don't think there's any major revision that would be substantive.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, good, super. Um, yeah, that's it for this. I just, I really appreciate you coming and talking to us about this and know it is a tight timeline. Uh, it would be my wish if we could just have this as a running agenda item on our council meeting. You don't necessarily have to be here, but we can get a report out from city manager Kurt, and I just would love to know that we're hitting all of our benchmarks. It's, I, I just like to know what's coming up, so.
And I think you were meaning, uh.
Okay, good, thank you.
Right, thank you Denise. I have no further questions. Uh, with that, I'll take it out to the public. Any public comments regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, um, because this item was, uh, simply an update, it's not actually required. Go on to our next item, which is to consider our two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three mid-year budget adjustments. And I'll give that over to, uh, Roberto or.
Okay. So you'll see in this presentation, Roberto's about to give you that our, our budget is pretty small and we run it pretty tight. And so we're making mid-year budget adjustments. Um, and our mid-year budget adjustment is still fifty-eight thousand dollars. And that's, uh, you know, I guess that's the operation of our budget being small, but also we run a pretty tight ship here and we, we stay within our, our means of track monthly, our, our expenditures and our revenues and make sure that we're not getting ourselves into trouble. Um, that being said, you know, we, we have reserves and we have some fund balance that we've been carrying over the last few years. Um, some of that was money, the twos bad money that we benefited from, from the pandemic. Uh, some of that was from just some operational things that happened and we didn't have expenses incurred that we anticipated. We didn't take as big a hit from the pandemic, so we've actually come out on the other side of the pandemic looking pretty good. Um, my concern, and this is kind of a plug as we go into budget development, it's not really related to the mid-year modifications. Um, that, for you all to be thinking, uh, for next month when we start talking about next year's budget. Uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion about how are we going to spend, uh, some of that excess money that we've been carrying on the books. And, and, and I know in a community like this, three and a half million dollars, uh, seems like a lot of money and for us it is. Uh, but in, in the, in the bigger world out there, and we've been doing a couple of work projects, uh, that's not a lot of money. That's, that's usually engineering for somebody like Mike in the TMC, but that's not engineering for projects. Uh, and we just had, and we may have done some, we just had kind of a, a wake-up call in, in the Safeway Park in the bottom where we had a sample. And, uh, you know, there's still going to be a jurisdictional fight over boundaries and who's responsible for paying for that. Uh, but in the interest of public safety, we, we put public safety first. There were three jurisdictions that showed up, two walked away. Uh, the two with the bigger budgets and the bigger researches. Safeway is, is, is our community, uh, primarily served our community. And so, uh, we, we took it upon ourselves to put public safety first and then deal with the jurisdictional bickering later. Um, but that, that's going to be a, an expensive project and I'm confident that in, in the end, we're not going to have to pay for it, but we'll see how that plays out. Uh, but those are the kinds of things that can pop up unexpectedly and a three million dollar, uh, reserve or a three million dollar capital project fund, whatever, uh, can be a very, very, uh, so I just want to put that plug in there while we're talking about what we're doing. But, uh, so you all are thinking, uh, about, you know, what you're hearing out in the community, uh, what you're hearing from many and from all public perspectives, some of our late maintenance and, and other issues that need to come up. Um, because like I said, very many dollars can go through that very good. Uh, and so, but what you're going to see from Roberto is, uh, you know, we've got to get a team here. We, we do a really good job of tracking the budget monthly and saying, I'm talking, we don't want to get in trouble on the law. Make sure that the people in the city have sound financials with it. So that's why you see, I gave Roberto very little in this year. It comes about in a lot of cases. And then the C. Show a screen.
Okay. Um, here now, I'm just, the city council, Roberto, whatever, with the regional government, should be providing the financials to the city. Uh, you have to point to your consideration, you have to adjust the city level safety scenes, have a really able to look and see, okay, how are we doing? Because it's like, we're back in April of twenty twenty-two, sorry. So things have changed, so we take a look at the main numbers. There's a lot of numbers in here, a lot of them will go up and down. Where, uh, the mid-year budget, that's what we just explained, some of the major ones for the general plan, which is the city's main operating plan. You have other funds, but those are restricted event use. This is what you have pulled this question over. You have the staff report and, uh, as it shows in the staff report, uh, we're recommending is an increase of a hundred and one thousand, two hundred in revenues in general fund. And then a main piece of forty-two thousand, six hundred in appropriations, which leads to a surplus of fifty-eight thousand. At the end of the year, above and beyond the current budget right now. That, that's a big, huge thing. So, as you mentioned, it is a positive change in the budget adjustment here. Uh, we also have in your staff report, there's an attention that has a, the detail, like my details, um, which have been, they make me go through these, uh, because I had a couple of things as you notice on there. A lot of ones, like I said, we're choosing the main ones, uh, the first one in the under revenues, I can claim, okay. And a hundred and fifty, twenty-five thousand, now, because we already, you see all of it, and it goes over the budget almost. You can easily, there's no projection on that. That is a dollar loss. When the order did change, this is the cannabis companies. It's not coming in, it's, you're all, where it keeps dropping, so we're suggesting a deep increase of eighty thousand cannabis tax. Uh, fortunately, the hazard occupancy packs, it's been doing quite well, the short-term rentals, uh, we're projecting a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under this above. It was what, looking at a hundred and ninety by the end of the year. Uh, those are the two big numbers. The other one, you'll see down below, the sixty-five thousand, two hundred is the cop money. This is money that comes from the state through the county. Uh, and as you see, the original budget was a hundred thousand. Uh, we do receive once a year, that all the cities receive, uh, an additional amount that's calculated as a surplus. And then you receive that money, which is sixty-five thousand, two hundred. We know that's going to be this, this city will be a hundred thousand. We received another fifty-five, two, so we know the, this year will be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred. So those items, in this increase of a hundred and one thousand, two hundred. Now, the, the biggest number in, in the city's budget is the sales tax and transaction, and the transaction act. There's never been any changes to those numbers just yet. It is not a percentage, it's, you might think, kind of. Uh, these numbers were originally provided by HCL, who's your sales tax consultant. They do it. The estimates were waiting, they're going to be providing a new revision. Once that comes in, we may come back with a revision and they're changing their numbers, but they are the experts because it's sales tax. The sales tax, and he says, no, I mean, on, uh, what's being purchased when, uh, but right now, a hundred and one thousand, two hundred increase in custom made revenue. Uh, of that, they're asking to spend a little bit of that in the, uh, down below. So you'll see in the city clerk's office, uh, we're taking fifteen, we're requesting to take thirteen thousand out of that payroll. Nothing has been used this year. Instead of putting it into overtime, so it's not, it's going to have to work overtime. That should cover through the year, uh, just to mention that that's covered. And then down below, the next page, you'll see there's also, uh, there's just an adjustment, uh, there's a need for eighty-five hundred dollars to cover the electric cost. That was a budget when we started this, that came last week. Uh, and so far, there's, uh, forty thousand in each other contracts, so it hasn't been taxed, but we're looking to move that eighty-five hundred from one to the other, just to cover those costs. So we're just moving the numbers around to keep the cost covered. The, uh, that's in the city clerk's office budget. In the city manager's budget, there was twelve thousand dollars that was budgeted under deferred compensation, which goes back to the days of the, uh, city manager, you know? That's still actually in use. The new city manager contracts, we're asking to move that to the payroll to pay for the increase in the city manager's compensation. But that's just moving money around. It doesn't change the total budget there. Where there is a change is on the next page, under the modern department. Looking for twelve thousand, one hundred more to rely on, we probably can reach. We did, um, miss this one. We missed this one, we were doing the budget, the variance unit after the fact, uh, and so therefore we need twelve thousand, one hundred. This is just an additional, uh, one date that this insurance fee will. And then the other thing we have to point out is this lease supply, that is a big portion of the budget. Uh, you'll notice that, uh, we're requesting about fifty thousand in overtime. There is more usage of overtime in this budget, but we're asking to reduce the reserves, the whole use of reserves. That'll offset it. There's a little bit of twenty-five hundred that was from UAL's. It's a third part of the city's, uh, retirement cost. This one, we're going to get the, the, once a year upfront, so we know that it's going to cost one on my fifty-three, because that is a change that we're going to double and recover that. And then, um, at the bottom of this, you'll see, uh, slight decrease in health insurance. We're using that to cover the retiree insurance, like on the top of the next page, that's one, one insurance over another insurance account, no cost there. Uh, ammunition has been purchased for the year, we need a thousand dollars to cover ammunition. And then at the bottom, you'll see that there is, uh, again, an offset, we needed more money for travel. Uh, we're taking that out of net reducing contributions, but there is sufficient money there. And those are the main costs, if you get down to the bottom, and the general fund, total expenses will increase by forty-two thousand. So those are the major changes, uh. We'll see as the year goes on, if there's a need, if we get into the budget, we'll be looking at the numbers a little closer at the end of March. Uh, this one, the city's budget is looking well, uh, next year, this will, now to the city, but it's doing well. Uh, the, there is going to be a surplus, uh, and we, we want to have to answer any questions. It's supposed to be given to the fin, finance committee. And they're a bit of a fudel, but we want to have to answer any questions that you might.
All right, thank you, Roberto. So I'll start with the council. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Howlett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions.
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Roberto, for, uh, for the presentation. And I know, uh, you're our financial guru. Uh, my question is, I'm just like wondering, uh, how can we, next month, we're going to be, uh, talking uh, about the budget for next year and, and you'll probably tell the other schools, whether it's our singular sides. And are there things that we have to consider, uh, for the next budget to make sure that we won't extend anything? Or in other, probably, how can we make our budget fair for next year?
Um, well, it, it will be a team effort. We will be starting inspections with the department staff to see what other things that they're going to need for next year. We look back and, and it is, we will, we look at, we compare that by uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, what's how this year is going. And then this is, we'll look more closely, we don't miss anything like that, one health and transport, that liability insurance premium. At this point, uh, everything is being covered, we protect the way on, and they should provide most of your insurance. They provide us, uh, in very estimate, we have the way, the final numbers again, we're going to give the final budget. Uh, they've done it, haven't they? They covered, we will have some discussions, uh, the finance committee, that we go along and break out the budget into different portions, so you don't have to get one big document that's, the different pieces of it, so. Eventually, we do have a new, some new members of the council who will take you through. And, uh, talk about the revenues and how they're changing, they're operating processes, they're important capital projects. Those, but you talk about those here, because those are not, those are not straight line, you have house and then you don't have any, it depends on what projects you have. But then, you, you will be much more comfortable with the budget.
Thank you for that response. And I'm also, I, I notice that our function, if they, if they don't see, that's it's really like growing, right? And I'm proud of that. And so, uh, I just have a question, like maybe for John or Roberto. If, uh, like how can we, what happens if that's still, uh, if that the OP? So what's the cost?
Right, so, so our T O T comes from Airbnbs and we have, uh, about twenty-seven of those now active, yes, there. And, um, yeah, so they come from, from vacation rather than, in the city. And we collect them monthly or quarterly, it's in quarterly.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, Airbnb goes strapped out and then they, they submit their tax records and they submit the tax payment. And then Karen will be collecting. And, um, so just a little plug on that, one up of the commentary. So you, you see in there, our revenues stream in very narrow. And, uh, part of the sales tax, we live on the sales tax, uh, we have a nice bridge and help the city over, uh, home uh, in some darker times financially, uh, and let us establish a reserve, which is critical. Uh, that's what helps keep, helps you, uh, weather down your recessions and things like that. So, um, you know, prior council, when they approved it, when the community got behind the dispensary and allowing cannabis to the community, um, the, the councils were wise, the city manager, and why give that, uh, money to establish a reserve rather than going on spending spree? And so that's put us on a much better financial footing and kind of helps shore up the foundation of our house. Uh, which is great, uh, that revenue source is going away, as you saw by Roberto's presentation. And that's not just us, that's statewide, uh, cannabis revenues are down, I think about, uh, close to fifty percent over the last two years statewide. Uh, so something's going to have to change. It's a new industry in that, you know, new industries, you know, anybody who's a business owner, that takes years to turn a profit, so this is a unique industry, but it's starting to see some of the struggles. Um, you know, and as long as we can, as long as, so California wanted to be the cannabis hub of the country and it's still not legalized, so everything we grow and manufacture here can be used here and sold here. And that's a problem because we manufacture, sell, so the, the industry's struggling with that, so our revenues are taking it in as a result of that. Um, T O T, that's something that we're going to have to talk about in the community, short-term rentals have come up by percent. Concerns about the nature of our community. And at what point does the nature of our community start to change, because we start to look more like Carmel, we have more rentals than we have residents? And, and I think you all agree what Carmel makes this community special is how many people, uh, here are, how many homes are occupied? And, and we have the highest percentage of, uh, people in this community who own their home and live in their homes, so you can, that's part of the culture of this community. So we'll have that conversation because right now, the T O T is, is, is going gamebusters and it's really making up for those short balls and cannabis other areas. So we have to come to that balance of enough revenues to be able to provide services that we want, but also keeping the culture of our community going.
Okay, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Roberto. That's all.
All right, thank you. So Councilmember Bill, how good is that? Okay, Councilmember Shirley?
I'm good, thank you, Roberto.
All right, Roberto, thank you for your presentation and also to the city manager, uh, for your diligent oversight of, of the budget and keeping the adjustments to a minimum. I really appreciate that. For those of you here in, in the council chamber and, and those that are watching remotely, the, the key takeaways here are that The, the key takeaways here are that we have really three big revenue sources. First one is sale tax. Which brings in about one point two, one point three million per year, and that is heavily reliant on Safeway. So that's our number one source of revenue, very reliant on Safeway. Our second is our property tax, which brings in about seventy or K a year, and that's fairly consistent, will probably go up as the houses. Start, uh, or continue to appreciate in cost. And then third, as you just heard, was the transient occupancy tax that is taking over the cannabis tax. In terms of amount that we receive from that source. So essentially, as you heard from the city manager, we're back to twenty fifteen, before we. Got that cannabis revenue source, and that's where we sit. Um, it also shows you how much revenue is generated by transient occupancy tax, the hotels, as you can imagine, in Monterey, Carmel. Pacific Grove, how much money, uh, is, is produced there as their revenue streams. And you can also see how much of a hit that they took during COVID. So it, it's, it's a very reliable revenue source, but. I don't know if the proliferation of Airbnbs is the solution to our economic issues. And, you know, as the city manager alluded to, it has an i- uh, impact on quality of life. Issues and changes of the character of the city. Uh, so we find ourselves in a situation where we really need to go out there and find a, a solid. Uh, steady revenue source that can make up for that loss that we have with cannabis. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, folks understood that and, and those key takeaways. With that, I'll go out to the public, are there any public comments on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, um, is there an action required to accept the, uh, adjustment?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the immediate budget assessment.
Okay, second.
All set.
All right, you have a second, all in favor? A motion to pass unanimously. Okay, the next item is to consider authorizing city manager to sign the Portag supplemental agreement with the Transportation Agency of Monterey County. For the Port Royal Regional Trail and Rimway project, in a two resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh four. Um, I realize that there are members of the council that may have to recuse themselves from this item. So what I'll do is hand it over to the city, uh, thirty first, we can talk about that in a particular aspect.
Thank you, Mayor, so with respect to this item, if, if a conflict of interest exists, you, uh, can say it on the record, what is the matter to discuss? Um, and then the council chamber, um, for the duration of the vote, if there are enough conflicts, if we don't have a forum. We will, uh, I don't know method, but I think we'll draw by random lot names in order that we do have a forum. Um, to participate under the, uh, rule of necessity.
Okay, thank you, um, my situation, uh, on this with Portag in the distance from my house. There was actually, uh, uh, a recent change that has occurred with the project itself, and involves the segment that goes along with Lumens. Uh, the Tamsi was unable to secure the land that within that easement. To put that, uh, trail along the, uh, the easement corridor. Um, so they've had to make an adjustment to move the trail actually up on Lumens, which essentially will look a lot like Carlton. Um, where the trail is part of the road, separated from the road, but is right next to it, and, uh, once again, it won't be in that. PG and E easement with parallel Lumens. With that alignment, my house was farther than five hundred feet, and although I haven't seen the final design. Uh, from Tamsi. It's most likely that that trail's gonna be even farther from me. So, eh, for that particular reason, um, I can still participate in this process. But are there any other council members that have issue?
So I'd like to see, is there a map, is there something that has actually been done to show my relationship against. Jeremy's, John's relationship to this project, and what, what methodology would you do to determine that?
There, there is a map, uh, within the packet, and. As you see the route, you can see what your table is on. As you see the route, what it becomes is if you're within five hundred feet. On that route.
Mr. Mayor, will you search you, I mean?
Yeah, it absolutely, it's on page one of one. Councilmember Howard?
So, is there a, there within, uh, radial, um. Image that we have similar to, uh, any commissioned projects for review, that sort of thing, or are we. Uh, measuring this is the best of our ability, uh, my second question is, um. Does this include, uh, the lesser or non-developed connecting areas of the railroad trail, such as endless way? Or is this only, uh, the areas that are supposed to be, uh, developed in the ground?
It includes the entire route and city manager?
Yeah, so, um. So we didn't do a map like we do with planning, uh, that's the case, because that's a little more complicated when it's a house of the house. Um, this one, you know, uh, got some other plans up front, it's across the street from your house. I don't, I don't disagree with that, but what I'm saying is there may be people on the public that don't know that, right? You know, in transference, you should have a map with a circle around each person's property, showing the alignment, and then we can refuse ourselves appropriately. That's what I'm asking. Here's across the street, so you can state that you have a conflict, I can't do conflict there. Councilmember Shirley's has already been established for nearly a year, uh, I think, starting in two years, you know, with. Uh, and Councilmember Howard, you're about a hundred, a hundred feet away, and you'll have practically three to respond to, right? And then, and then, and Councilmember Hury, uh, had similar situation as, as, uh, Councilmember Montell had. Uh, where he doesn't have a financial interest in his house, so he does not have to. So with that in mind, for, for, I think the, the three of these conflicts, whether they even happen, animal, running?
I, I, I am choosing to stay. Um, so even though I do have a conflict, this item is so important to me that, um, I will.
Okay, okay. I'm on the ready. I think this is important enough for the city that we all should.
Uh, having a bonus caution, uh, I should certainly abuse myself for my ask for this in the sense. I will reveal, though, however, that both myself and my domestic partner are renters and not property owners. Um, and so I have no financial interest, any real estate interest. In said property, so I think that, uh, I'm an in carols.
If that's your determination, you know, I've explained risks and recommendation that those within five hundred feet refuse themselves, but, uh. I give you my, my counsel and recommendation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept your recommendation, play it safe.
Okay, so we have a forum. Um, with that, I'll put it over to the city manager.
Right, that's fair, um, so I don't think for anybody in the, uh, Portag is a surprise, right? Everybody's familiar with the project, uh, just kind of how we got here, uh, summary, um, in, in April of twenty twenty, well, before that. So, uh, Taxi and Dr. Watson and Scott Walsh is one of our residents. Uh, had gone around and talked with, uh, agencies that were wanting to be part of this twenty-eight mile, uh. Trail system that was envisioned by Fred Scott years ago and brought forward. Uh, you'll all remember, it was part of the Measure X, um, that we all voted for, one of the projects that was envisioned with that. Um. And, uh, um, so Tamsi went around and worked with all of the agencies, uh, developed a master agreement in, uh, April of twenty twenty. The city of Delrayo signed on to that agreement, uh, that agreement, uh, basically established that the city would work with Tamsi. Uh, looking for funding, project design, uh, getting the project done, basically. Uh, we also adopted the, all the mitigation and monitoring, uh, plan that was in the E I R. Uh, and so that was for the whole twenty-eight mile stretch, and so that's why it was called the master agreement, and all of the agencies along that portion of the trail signed off. Uh, on being part of that, so we can get this trail done. Uh, what we're doing today is basically reiterating the city's commitment to those, uh, uh. Portions of the mitigation and monitoring and the maintenance requirements and everything. That are specific to our section of the trail, that's it. It's not anything different than happened in the master agreement, we, the council of the city already agreed to this. This is just bringing it down so that it's clear as you go forward, what is specific to our section of the trail. But everything that's being approved in here was already approved, and approved by the council as part of the, uh, map, everything that's. Um, to let everybody understand, you know, what a goal it is, um, but. Uh, the, really nothing new, uh, I think we'll talk about. Where we go forward, uh, Mr. Mike Delar, Sir, from Tamsi is gonna give us a presentation on the trail. And on the supplemental agreement, it'll give you more details, and we'll expect to get the community where we're going on this, so there's no surprise.
Yes, thank you, thanks for that. Starting program, the project is a very transportation. It's fair, the council, the person, done a number of presentations on the Portag project, uh, originally, so it's pretty fair, person, uh, presenting on this tonight. Uh, the introduction by the city manager, uh, covers most of my presentations, thank you. So, uh, again, just starting off with a, a brief overview, if you're, uh, familiar with the project, it's, uh, one and a half. Miles of multi-loos, our recreational ground, it's American facilities act compliant, it runs from, uh, North Fremont, uh, along, we're gonna go portion of Buckingham Park. Um, around the tourist ports, uh, we'll, uh, we've got the new permanent installation for Butterfly Garden. Uh, the trail picks down at Delray Park, uh, and then it runs to, uh, routine, uh, switchback to the prom on. Up Carlton and then, uh, down to this training, and the Delray Division School. Uh, on the, the next slide, I guess a bit of history, the city manager here, um, discussed with, uh, the master agreement. Uh, the, as you mentioned, the agreement was through by, uh, Tamsi and the city of Delrayo, as well as other jurisdictions, the twenty-eight miles trail run through. Um, uh, the Monterey, uh, regional parks districts in the seaside, and some of the, the other jurisdictions, all also signed on to the master agreement. But really, what that does, sets out that Tamsi will be the one to plan, fund, and construct segments of the, the trail. Uh, once the, the trail is constructed, the city will then take ownership, um, have, uh, responsibility to, uh, enforce the mitigation measures that are. Are appropriate and are, uh, consistent with, uh, the second of the trail runs within the city's jurisdiction, um, and then provide, uh, routine maintenance and trail follow. Um, and then, uh, that's where we've been stipulated that both, uh, parties that enter into further supplemental agreement, once we had, uh, segments identified or construction to. Uh, when more realized, the exact alignment for the channel will be constructed, and then it's identified as specific mitigation, that is, that's what we're doing, we're gonna pack it today. Uh, so we're probably, uh, uh. This slide, I just kind of goes over, uh, defines the alignment, uh, uh, reconfirmed as the city's commitment, so to take ownership, and then. The specific mitigation letters that are called out are basic ones that we've already, uh, discussed, as we presented on the, the project before. Uh, uh, litter, a base collection, um, uh, ensuring that the trail is, um, within police controls for the city. Uh, the city has, uh, uh, discretion on, um, signs of maintenance, as well as, uh, appropriate use regulations. Some of the things we were talking about was potentially, uh, the city looking to closing the gates of Delray Parks, and so maybe completely, the city's just kind of, you know, the reason. Um, on the next slide, then, um, that's for then, so what comes next, uh, after this slide, so there's a, a couple more, uh, city actions that we'll be, uh, coming back for. One is a, uh, public utilities east end, uh, that's needed, uh, near the proposed, uh, new asset to eighteen, or the front post, this would be to reroute utilities. Um, uh, Catalina, uh, P G A T C utilities, uh, that are, uh, currently in the state, where they're going to eighteen. Uh, it would go into a portion near, uh, the city's corridor, uh, so the, uh, uh, city, uh, city manager and city attorney have the draft of the. Uh, utility easement, as well as a map, and we're, uh, still currently have a review, but we'll bring that back. Uh, uh, council meeting in April, legislature mission in April. Now, all together with, uh, bundle these together, uh, we may be steering the contracts, and just to stipulating. Uh, primarily for the, the other pass, and also, uh, pre-month forward, uh, uh, pre-month to eighteen, all of the cities centers, uh, jurisdiction. Maybe maintenance for those sections of the trail, uh, that are within the state, where I'm going to eighteen, and so primarily for the other pass. Uh, the structure itself would be, uh, uh, contracted responsibility, um, and then any, um, maintenance for, uh, panelism, or. You know, I believe that's the most successful change we've all to the city, so that would be spelled out within the, uh, maintenance agreements, this is what we're the couches. Uh, they are working on drafting that agreement, and it's definitely gonna come through the city, hopefully. Um, as I mentioned, bundle that with, uh, utilities, and that's, uh, in, at one meeting. Uh, the supplemental list for you today is also going to the, uh, Monterey, Minnesota, regional park district, for, for, uh, this is gonna be for, uh, uh. Uh, and in the city of Seaside, uh, we're working to get that scheduled, um, both the supplemental, as well as the change, uh, in your mayor's position. Uh, for the April twentieth, um, council meeting in the city of Seaside. Um, one item in the different month that I didn't have a chance to add to the slide, was a discussion about potentially holding an open house for members of the community to come. And, uh, review the plans and ask questions, so we're trying to, uh, we'll work with city staff to try and get that scheduled, uh, around that, you know, so you'll see. Uh, or, uh, sometime in the week night evening, when people can come, we'll have, uh, a separate virtual G H D, who's like, sharing. Um, even. Um, and then after that, uh, we'll be, uh, moving towards, uh, completing the final design on the project, and, uh, getting our certain application and moving up to bid. Uh, back for, uh, June of this year. After that, one, about six months to, uh, about six months to award the contracts, so that's the fall winter, so, right? And then we'll be looking at start of destruction, um, thereafter, so that will spread out next year. Um, but all during that time, we'll continue with the public outreach process, and just kind of want to point out that, on the ground, recently, we have been doing, uh. Uh, site visits, uh, webinars, um, really, uh, taking feedback from the community and making changes to the project. Uh, public outreach phase kind of shifts now, so where we have a project, and so now we want to be able to get up front, and let folks know what it is that we're doing. Uh, in terms of how we're, um, staging the project, and how construction is going, and voters, and stuff like that, so. What we do is, uh, what we've done on other projects is preference down this, uh, four phase approach. Where we have our general public outreach, we're sorry, it's our, where we can come and do a presentation to a applicant, if you'd like to have that. Um, community groups, other interested parties, um, uh, come do presentations, send out, uh, email newsletters, and just kind of let people know. Um, uh, the processes as we start to move forward. Then we'll get to construction, probably about thirty, uh, thirty days, you'll actually start this, right, and so that's kind of where we get down to, uh, the rest talks about, um, this is some instructions, and so. Ground, how we're in a stage, um, and how, um, uh, different segments are gonna be scheduled out, we're really kind of need a contractor on board, us to be able to start those discussions and get those things figured out. And then once we, since you construction, we'll have a good type of destruction updates, we'll send you, uh, noted this, uh, anybody that signs up to, and, uh, any land lawyers. Or, or, a lot of the, uh, the work though is in, um, you know, off of the, uh, progress, and we spent that to be minimal, uh, but. That's be minimal, uh but a lot of people get updates about where we'll be working. Um to just keep the community informed. Uh some of the tools that we use to uh implement public outreach going forward is essential. Presentations, uh community groups, uh. Uh sustainable Delrayos, neighborhood associations. Uh what we've done on other projects is establish an interagency task force. Bringing in working devices. Business, uh the city's app, uh again. Uh we'll bring these groups together and meet on a regular basis and talk about some issues we're constructing when we go forward and stick forward as a community. Uh we'll also have an internal communications team to help us uh develop uh those plans. Do weekly look at it for where things are and ensure we stay on top of um the schedule and getting uh information out. Um and then continuing on with our email newsletters and most of you uh messaging what this is all. Um so uh that brings me to the end of the presentation, we have a project website if anybody uh wants to get more information.
Good people of the presentation. I have one thing, I I did one also today, so. Um the TMC staff have been great, we we we're in and talking about different aspects of them. But so the the council though and the the community guys. Um this was the team effort working on the supplemental agreement. Um I think that they were all much happier when the chief was on the team with them. And now they have a crappy city manager who's on the same thing though, uh but. Um but uh you know, going through this, we're in the unique situation with TMC where we're the first agency going through this. And so this is building on itself, and so we're the first ones going through all of this, going through review and supplemental review and everything. So I did push back, not a lot, and they were very receptive on my comments and changes. But um you know, there there are, there are things, because you know, they're thinking bigger perspective. And all of the different agencies that they're going to be talking to and what do they need in the contracts. And so there were things to them that weren't really pertinent to our communities, we weren't on that. So this is every good enough, this isn't something that's been forced on us, this isn't something that we didn't have input in, this has been a teamwork. Uh situation and partnership and working on this together and and trying to craft what makes sense for our community to do so.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Louie, any questions, comments?
Thank you, sir. And first of all, thank you, John, for really like working with the uh uh people of TMC. And I've seen him, that you you really like be working with them, there was one time when I was here. And uh and thank you also, TMC, for coming over here to uh do the presentation and make us feel like very uh aware. Of what's going on at the updates. And uh yes, so my, uh while I was listening to your presentation, uh I just have a question like. Uh do you think as a city, uh are there any potential uh challenges to raise? That are stated with this agreement that we have to be thinking of or that we should address early on?
Really, uh I think I don't think so. Things that are listed in there for the city's responsibilities for taking ownership of the trail and. Eating the trail, uh those were all kind of established of the master agreement as well as just kind of reconfirming those things. Um so uh we've been coordinating with uh Jeff Wayne previously. And the city manager working through this process, so I think we've uh you know, been able to uh you know, get this to where it's uh. Um but the city would be assuming afterwards is really uh hopefully.
Thank you, and um I'm just like thinking, uh if there are any other questions that we as a council should be a- asking you. So uh of the, of course, uh before we implement uh. Before that, of course, we want to make sure that there's really like some implementation. And there's gonna be no, I mean like uh. So uh that's only I've been thinking.
Completely understood, I think um the the best way to do that is to continue with the participation city managers have of us. Um and as I mentioned, as we start to go forward, pulling together uh an interagency task group. Um and making sure that we maintain uh city participation with that group and then um working to make sure for uh coordinating.
Thank you.
All right.
Here, um before I saw your presentation, I had questions about who who's gonna get the supplemental agreement next, which you answered. And my next other questions about communication, and so I love the the answer book of those within your presentation. And super excited about the interagency task force, I think that's a great idea, I don't know when that is gonna start. Maybe that starts right when you start construction or is it before or? And like who facilitates that, is it TMC? And then who decides who's who's part of that, I don't know, I just think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it would be when we have the contractor on board, uh it's actually dislocated and will. Uh of course, we uh participate in the city and we should have learned, you know, getting all members of the community involved.
Yeah, that's a great idea, so, thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Michael, for for your presentation. Within the supplemental agreement, I know there are maintenance requirements, most of it is just signage, uh dog weights. Um trash receptacles, like types of things. But long term, maintenance that may be required for the trail or you have um. You know, other aspects of retaining walls, those sorts of things. When those questions were asked in the past. Uh the response was that there may be grant line down the road to pay for those type. Of repairs and maintenance if needed. Can you tell me if there are or typically in the past, has there been grant money available for those sorts of things? And I know it's tough to to predict that because those types of maintenance issues probably won't come up for ten, fifteen, twenty years. But wha- what is the likelihood then, if if that type of money is available now, what would be the likelihood of that available in the future?
Um well, two persons that I could think of, I'll add are the three. There's uh the this big portion of Measure X that receives the eligibility to do maintenance, uh there's also uh. Uh the region service transportation program, the city receives a fair share of that, we also do a competitive. Funding for that uh via grants to uh do maintenance. So those where essentially be all local, uh who do some research, there's any uh state programs that would come in as well.
Okay, thank you. You had mentioned, folks, the the city having the opportunity to come together and take a look at the final engineering. Uh designs, I I think that's a fantastic idea, I I think. It would be great for our residents to be able to come and see those uh plans, those engineering diagrams. And have someone here that can explain what exactly the items are. And you know, because they get complicated, it's hard to interpret them. That way, you know, there's, there's some anxiety from some folks, there's excitement from others. That would be a great opportunity for them to see exactly what's gonna happen in front of their house, for example, or their backyard, whatever it may be. And I I would like to see maybe the council, uh you know, approve doing something that. In 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 addition to the supplemental agreement. So our residents will have the opportunity to see that. And if there are minor adjustments that need to be made, maybe that can be taken into consideration and done before it goes out to bid. So I just pass that along to the council, that I think that it is a good idea and I would, I would highly support that. The the other piece is the public outreach that you mentioned, I think that's gonna be important as construction begins. You know, not only what to expect, what to see, at what times and so on, I think it's gonna be absolutely critical as we kick it off. So those outreach meetings, messages, whatever it may be. I I think are gonna go a long way to reducing any anxiety residents may have or uncertainty that they may have out there. Um you know, they don't wanna wake up one morning and see a big bulldozer heading down the road that they weren't expecting. Or noise that they weren't expecting, so I I I. I hope with the public outreach that the maximum amount of information going out to our residents. Um uh would happen in through different venues. Um so I think that that's also important. And thank you to the city manager for your review of the supplemental agreement. I know that supplemental agreement and the master agreement are very similar. And he's had the opportunity to compare and contrast and make sure that the city is not obligated for something that, you know, we can potentially since. Uh spend resources on and you know, sign up for something that, you know, necessarily won't do as well in the future. And I I appreciate what the city manager has done in comparing and contrast uh those documents and make sure that. He where he's looking out for the best interest of of the city. Um I don't have any other questions, but what I would like to do is send it out to the public. Uh if you have any questions or comments, and um Michael will be here to to answer them. So public comment is now open.
This is Karen Harris, um my hat today is sustainable Delrayos. The chair, and I thank you for that too for uh public comments, huh? And thank you, Michael, for um providing the invitation to come and speak to the Sustainable Delrayos. Um so that we can coordinate as things move forward, especially around the Butterfly Garden. And how that's gonna look, so, because we don't wanna. Be a hindrance, but if anything, we can be of help. Um I was also wondering with all the rain that we're having, how is that gonna affect that new pass? So gonna be a pump or something under there, drainage, so just have some questions like that. Uh anyway, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. And Michael, all of the answer, would you like to answer now or wait till the end or? Okay, perfect. Next public comment?
Hi, I'm Tris Bepi, I'm Sasio, and I just want to know how excited I am. Thank you, Fred, and I just can't wait to ride my bike into Fort. So thank you all.
Hey, any other public comment? Uh Michael, do you want to answer that question?
Uh certainly, for the underpass, uh the way that it would be constructed and created will allow the water runners.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council for a discussion, council member Louie.
Uh well, uh thank you so much uh for the input of our public uh uh over here and. And I'm also very excited uh for this Ortag project that will come to our city. And and I just want to really make sure that all of the things that we have to consider has been thought of. Uh so that there's gonna be a clean implementation, smooth uh implementation of of Ortag uh through Delrayo. Especially that we're the first one who will, who will benefit the the trail, so uh. And uh and I I'm so thankful for TMC and all of the Ortag.
Yeah, just to uh go on here where you want to involve different groups, I think we should bring Sustainable Delrayo into the mix, uh our department. Yeah, that's okay, I was trying to get my initials correct. We have a lot of groups within the city that do a lot of different things, and if if TMC is amenable to it, they can set up those at all of our uh different. Um desks that we have coming up, I know Sustainable D.C. that I have on Earth, Sustainable D.R.I. and stuff coming up. Um the Kankas the Fourth of July, uh we have that on Earth Day, I can come along. There's a number of places where we could certainly have them set up and people can just drift in and deck it out and we'd be able to do that. And then we can do some more maybe structured back things if if that's. That's pretty much it, so I'm really looking forward to this.
Okay, councilmember Shaw.
Uh TMC and Fred for all and Mike, all the work that you've done, I know you you put in a lot of time and effort. Um to get this to come to fruition, so um and and this is an experiment, because we are the the first one. So uh I appreciate the outreach that you're talking about during the communication. I think that's really important, um just like we were all talking about, so um I just, I just want to express my my big thanks to you. So, I'm very excited.
Thank you. In reference to the final engineering review. I I had actually spoken with the director of TMC and kind of what I was envisioning is. Using City Hall as as the venue and having an engineer maybe from GHD here. Uh and allowing like a four hour time frame where all residents can come in and take a look at it. And you know, within rooms as well, members of both groups, they can come in here and actually one on one, speak with the engineer. Look at the plan, if they have questions on it, uh they can get their questions answered. And have that happen before the the twenty April, April timeframe. Um to have that opportunity for folks to come in and and do that, so that's kind of what I was envisioning. Um and you know, if if we can make that a a friendly amendment to uh authorize even city manager. I I would like to include that. Okay, so with that, um I'll accept the motion uh to authorize city manager to sign the Ortag supplemental agreement. Uh with with uh the the friendly amendment. Uh regarding the the review of the plans, the final planned engineering plans. So, okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a a uh a motion and a second, all of the favor. Okay, uh motion passes unanimously. If someone could get councilmember Howard, so if you could come back in, we'll move on to the next item. Which is introduced in way of a full reading of the ordinance of section ten point eight point thirty. On the Delrayo Municipal Code regarding parking vehicles in public property for more than seventy two hours. And I'll just give that to the city manager.
Thank you, well, since I saw my.
Mayor, councilman, resolving brief, um this amendment or this uh this item seeks to amend the. It adds, for the purposes of execution, a vehicle must be moved at least one hundred linear feet. And not returned to the same location sooner than twenty four hours from the park to set the seventy two hour consecutive period. What we've had in the past is uh the guy that moves it after seventy two hours and doesn't really make available that spot. The streets for parking for everybody, and that's what this would help you. So I don't want to take up your time, uh if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, so with that, uh councilmember Howard, any questions, comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, councilmember Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh I have some, yeah, so uh Chief, uh thank you for the presentation. And and I know uh we have really like our pure intent uh to have our, you know, community better. For these uh ordinance, uh I'm just wondering uh why one hundred feet? What the the nu- uh what's the reason behind the number?
There is no reason uh behind the specifics of one hundred feet. Um it's just important to free that space up for a period of time to let them start there. So um it really is arbitrary that the one hundred, it could have been fifty.
The hundred is is more uh in line with what other cities do uh in terms of parking.
And so uh so uh I really thought about this like during the weekend, like uh. Make sure that the a car that moved, you know, so I know an inch or a foot won't won't really let the um. So uh but maybe if if it was uh probably a one car parking slot. So, uh, but maybe if, if it was, uh, probably a one or parking slot would be probably noticeable, uh. It does the car that moved. And then I was also, uh, uh, also like thinking like if. If, if I go to Safeway and or go to the gym and then, and then, uh, I would park my car back into the, to the, uh, to the road. And does it mean that, uh, uh, I should not even be parking there anymore when I come back, uh, was, uh?
I understand your question. Yeah, it, this, this will not affect people that drive daily. This is after that seventy-two hour period, it needs to make a, okay.
Yeah, from an enforcement perspective. So we're not looking to be proactive and go out looking for cars. This is complaint driven. And it's generally, you know, somebody has, somebody who's parked a car for months or years in front of their house and it's basically abandoned. Um, and so that gives our officers the ability to go out and tag in and it's every day after move, they'll shop it. And, you know, because we're a small community and, and we have a very involved police force, uh, who are out in the community every day. They know all the cars parked in the street. And so they know where to position. But if we're not out looking, okay, this car's been here for three days. That's not what we're doing. It would have to be complaint driven.
Okay, yeah. Uh, so Chief, what about, uh, for some of us who would go on vacation, uh, like some way we go out in the country and of course, uh. We'll, we'll not be home and if we have cars parked, uh, in, in the street and, and technically we can, we are able to, uh.
I understand.
Yes, uh, like move the car or if we're, if we're going that long. So what would be this, uh, scenario would be?
You would notify it happens all the time. Um, there's vacation watch. If we're available through the city hall, even on our website and notify us and we'll keep an eye on your house where you're going and also know that that car won't move.
Okay, so so basically that, and the city manager thinks that is, uh, what it does.
Absolutely. Like the city manager said, we're not out there looking for this. Um, it is our most. Parking issue. Um, having said that, uh, it, it rarely comes to the point that we would want to have cities far away. We wanna educate people and we wanna. Cars that are not running on the street. We do want that because, uh. We get that often and if you move them a foot and they move, that's why they run. And so. We're not making work your lives or wanting to make your life difficult. We're just wanting another tool.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, councilmember Bill.
I think that got my question answered. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Councilmember Sher.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, um, Mayor Perkwin for this or Chief Perkwin. Uh, I, I think this is a good solution. So I'm thinking of working on it.
Yeah, I also agree. I think it's a, a good solution and I like the fact that it's complaint driven. Uh, it eliminates all those concerns that, that, uh, have been brought up and most likely will be brought up. So I, I do support this as well. Um, so with that, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any public comments, uh, about this item?
I was wondering if there's a, a limit, like if they park across the street. That's less than a hundred feet, right? But they move it from the other side of the street. That's an issue. House across the street from me nearby, they have like seven or eight vehicles. So is there also a limit to how many vehicles the house can have?
There's certainly no limit on the amount of vehicles that you can have. Um, so again, um. Across the street would not work, would not need be one hundred linear feet. Um, I understand they are vacating that spot, but they still need to move it by distance.
I'm working with my neighbor, so please leave the spot open and then.
Well, that's what it's about. How your neighbor, if there's a problem with your neighbor, you have a conversation. Most of these things need to work that thus getting involved for sure.
Again, also keep in mind it's for twenty-four hours and then they can.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, any other public comment? I've seen none. I'll bring it back to the council and you have, uh, any other comments, question? All right.
The mayor.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. It says wait before we need the, that means it does not come back to us. If we're just approving it now and it's done.
It'll come back for a second. We'd like it on.
Oh.
This tag tag.
Got it. Good. I am with you through.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any close? Passed unanimously. Okay, move on to the next, uh, item is, uh, reports. Remember?
Uh, yeah, just, um. Main thing in the, uh, you've all probably noticed out there, it's still wet and it's getting wet. So please. Be diligent and, hey, tend to the near properties. We've had, we've had a single, we've had some, you've seen the slides, probably have we created some of the private property. Uh, and some of those were direct results of improper operations. Um, so just be aware of what's going on around your house and around the neighborhood and, and be careful. Our city manager has been exceedingly fortunate, um, where we're reaching kind of critical half and coming to the public. And so please keep your eyes open and be safe. Don't go out in the storm, or go out in the storm. Our police are busy enough in this. So just everybody be safe out there. Hopefully we get stronger.
All right, thank you. Uh, council reports and, uh, agency highlights are in the packet. Uh, our next meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. This meeting is adjourned.